You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the December 21st, 2022 meeting of the LaPorte County Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the LaPorte County Commission meeting for Wednesday, December 21st. We're glad you're here before the cold storm. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We would like to have a moment of silence after the pledge for Steve Squires. He was a 42-year volunteer for hazmat, LaPorte County hazmat. He started in 1982. Before that, he was with LaPorte County Civil Defense as a volunteer for five years. He served in all various capacities, radiology, safety and chemicals, and was also active in our community. Forty-two years of volunteering is pretty amazing. So let's think of Steve after the pledge. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Matias.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Commissioner Marzinski.
Present.
All three are present.
Thank you. Let's consider the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections or deletions?
Most to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next, consider approval of the December 7th, 2022 minutes.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of December 7th as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Next, we have consideration of claims.
Commissioners, we have for the payroll period ending 12/16/2022, the amount of $1,871,860.57. And for the period, operating expense claims for the same period of $74,838,151.92. Bears noting that the bonus is in the payroll and that the distribution of the settlement monies from the property taxes in the operating expense claims.
Thank you.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next, we have public comment. Are there any members of the public either on Zoom or present who would like to speak at this time?
My name is Michael Seitz. I live at 212 Lakeside. You know, there was a time in my previous career where I used to come before the commissioners and ask permission to put Santa Claus up on the front of the courthouse. And back in that day, that was the only decoration that was on the courthouse. And I was walking over here today and just looked how pretty this whole campus around here looks. I mean, the lights are just gorgeous and boy, whoever, you know, I don't, whoever put that up did a heck of a job because it is just beautiful. And the courthouse looks beautiful and the yard looks beautiful and thank you maintenance for doing that.
Yeah. Thanks for calling that out, Mike. Larry, make sure that your team knows how much we appreciate that. All the families, all the children that get to see those lights, they really enjoy them. So thank you for that. Any other members of the public wish to speak?
My name is Kerry Schneck. I live in Center Township, 4142 North, 325 West. This is a ask consideration of completing the road that was almost started, the grindings at 400 West and Johnson Road. There is a problem there with that intersection. It's been there for quite a while. We'd like to see it moved down to the bottom where at one time it was started. I don't remember when, but as you go by the Johnson Road area with the tow road area, you'll see all the grindings right there. I'm also a member of the Center Township Fire Department, so I got some backing with that because we do not use that road other than when we go to emergencies that are on the tow road. Due to the condition of the road, getting off and getting on, we can take that way to the tow road, but coming back, we have to go down and continue on to 300 North and back on around because we don't want to turn back on to Johnson Road due to that situation there. The road is the main road. It's on the maps I've given you people up there. It shows you on the satellite. It shows you where our fire station is at and where the road is considered to be moved to. That's where the grindings are already. 400 West goes all the way up to 800, 900 North in Springfield Township. It's about one of the direct shots of a county road that goes up there besides Highway 39. We need, we would like to use that road going places. One of the little pieces I gave you here was also mileage of from point A to point B that I did in my car. And it does, normally if we're taking something on Highway 35, like 450 North on Highway 35, we'll take Johnson Road down to 35 and all the way across. If we could use 400 West, that would take us there. And I'm not doing times, I'm strictly doing miles. It's about half the distance. So that would be a great, greatly would help us as, and the people that we're serving to have that. Is there any questions for me on that?
Pretty familiar with the situation. We've talked with Kerry. I've talked with Dwayne at Highway Department. I've talked with Jay, talked with Mitch. And I'm not really sure, we can't seem to nail down, at one time that road was proposed when the Center Township Fire Department was going to move out there. And I think at first, we weren't sure where they were going to be, possibly on that side of the road.
The original property the township owned was to the grindings and to the east, which is a poor location for a fire station.
Because they cut through there. Didn't, it's not really what I'd say prepared, but they did at least mark it off where it would be, and that's why they saved some of the millings for that. And then after you built the fire station, it just kind of dropped and nobody's really picked up on it. But there was suggestions about maybe making it just one way going to be east. But we, I did talk with Mitch Bishop, our county planner, and I know at other intersections in the county, we've gotten a road safety grant where you have an unsafe situation. Just completed one at Loughran Road and 250 and 150 North. He's going to look into that. But in checking with Jay and with Dwayne, we could do the base of that road in-house. And that way, when you do the top coating, we'd put that out for bid with the Ritz Riley or Milestone, and it wouldn't be that expensive. And we have the millings there to do that. Nobody seems to know why we stopped. Just when the fire department decided to move across the road instead, it was dropped and nobody's ever picked up on it. But due to my friends continually whining about it, no, it's the right thing to do. Kerry and I, we've known each other a really long time. It's the right thing to do, not only for the fire trucks, but school buses and anybody. When you come up that road to, you're right there by the bridge by Johnson Road and people are whistling through there, especially like at four o'clock in the afternoon, if you've ever been on Johnson Road at four, holy moly, it is not safe at all. You would have a much better field of vision to move it down where we had proposed. I'm hoping that maybe Mitch can come up with something this, this winter for a road safety grant. Because it's not that expensive to finish it, to get it done. And I think it would, it's something we actually need to do. I plan to continue pursuing that. I think, I don't know why we couldn't get it done.
Thank you. They also talked with the bus garage. There's also four school buses that do take that road. They are not allowed to go when they're coming up southbound on 400 West. They're not allowed to take a left to go back towards Richfield. They have to go some other route due to the intersection there with the, that's what Rich said, with the traffic that goes over here because you really can't see very well, especially if any low cars are, surprisingly, we don't have more accidents there because of that, because of actually the bridge, the cement that's on the bridge.
I think it's probably the same situation we had at 250 in Loughran where you didn't really have a whole lot of accidents, but you had a lot of close calls, a lot of tire screeching and, and that's, that is definitely something that we, that it needs to be addressed. It is unsafe situation the way it is.
Thank you.
I wanted, I asked Kerry to be here because I wanted to get it on record, get it on public record that we, that we need to look at it. And like I said, I've asked Mitch to look about a grant. Jay has come up with a plan, got it all figured out, what it would cost to fix it and do it right in the spring. And I would like to see it put on our paving list, our agenda for in the spring to just get it done. Because it's laid there. When did they do that? When did you move your fire station?
It was in 19. It was, I actually talked before that, but I, I don't really know. I just remember as fire department was, that was one of the projects that they, that the county was going to take care of was move that down there so we could use access that road a little easier.
Lisa Pierzkowski has asked about it several times too. They'd like to see it done. It was, it's an accident waiting to happen.
True.
I give you my word, we're going to work on it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing it up, Kerry.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I, Tim Stables, LaPorte County Auditor. Relax. Nothing controversial. I just wanted to second what Mike had to say. Walking over here to the courthouse, the beauty is stunning, the subdued red lights replacing the floodlights on the courthouse, the combination Larry and crew of its combination of magical and also very solemn at the same time. And it's frankly emotionally overwhelming. It's spectacular. So thank you to all. And I just wanted to, by way of a small sidebar, I remember about 25 years ago, almost people engaged in preservation donated the courthouse Christmas tree to the courthouse. I was the treasurer at the time. I recall that, I believe it cost the organization $160 for the Christmas tree. And here we are all these years later and it just keeps growing and growing. None of us are getting any younger, that's for sure. And those vertical lights that are on the tree, purples and greens and everything, reds, it's really all very stunning. I just want to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mike Mullenauer, County Council. Relax. I could be controversial, but I won't be either. Merry Christmas. First, the reason I'm up here is to compliment three people. There's more than that I could compliment, but three of you that have done a lot for the county government. Sheila with city and county and Shaw with the county and the city, his county attorneys at different times, or attorneys. And Diane with the secretary for the commissioner. She's always been professional. Every time I either run across her anywhere, talk to her up there, called her, I know she's leaving and that's a great loss and I'm sorry about that, as well as you Sheila and Shaw. But just thank you for all your service, to both of you, for all these years. Shaw, of course, I know the best because of being sheriff for eight years and all the, well, I shouldn't say all, the lawsuits that we had. There was a couple. One specifically was on a double murder that two people got basically released because of a controversy with the Indiana Supreme Court decided. And Shaw defended it and saved the county $40 million, 20 million each on the lawsuit. And I think, I know I was grateful and I think a lot of other taxpayers should be also. So thank you. Thank you, all three of you. And the compliment, compliment or comment on what Mike said about the courthouse and decorations over there. But not only the decorations, Larry and his people have done a terrific job every year with taking care of that courthouse. You come over the overpass, you see those beautiful stained glass windows and the lights in them. It's very, anybody coming into LaPorte, especially for the first time, has to really be impressed. And now with this Christmas decorations there, even more so. So kudos to Larry and his maintenance crew. Thank you and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas. Thanks, Mike. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Somebody has to be Debbie Downer. Randy Beach, 4177 West Schultz Road. Over the last couple of weeks, I've been sending at least one mail on some days, other days, two or more to all of you. And the days I send none are matching the amount of traffic movements in and out of my, in and out of the industrial operation allowed to operate behind my home. As of last Friday, the company was still witness using materials most likely originated from the excavations taking place behind my property line. The mountain of sand that's on the property on 300 North is from our neighborhood as well. I received a couple of emails that have let me know that the company shouldn't be using the materials excavated on 400 West for what it's doing for the county on the Love's project. They still do. I bet if the county looked at other projects they oversee, they would find the same thing we found. Who's making sure they don't use the material? Just the neighborhood? Our neighborhood has been keeping an eye on what's been going on here. We've been telling you something isn't right. We've said that since 2015, when the county first said it was okay for a dream home in a pond. We have seen some trucks re-entering the 400 West site, coming back from the Love's construction project hauling soils that were dug up from the area. It's directly across the street from the now closed Deercroft Recycling and Disposal Facility. Weeks ago, I started asking for the analytical studies on the materials being hauled away. I've asked if hauled away from the LaPorte County Sew and Water Project. They were specked into the contract. No reports ever came. The trucks keep coming. Last week, I sent out a photo of a truck that had concrete pieces in it with rebar. The type of material should be going to a state permitted dump. Is that what the property behind my home is now considered? Next, I'm being told nothing can be done. None of these departments can do anything while it's in litigation. I believe this is choice. I have heard the code compliance, I have heard code compliance give their excuse. It's very weak. I haven't heard the sheriff yet. I do not think the sheriff gets a daily briefing from a judge on what laws are going to be violated so they know where to catch the criminal. I could be wrong. I could name off all the offenses again. I could name off all the county elected and appointed wrongdoers again. Why? It doesn't stop the trucking. I'm not going to sit back and just watch this continue. I'm not going to take on the financial burden of trying to stop this anymore. I will continue looking into current contracts and follow the paper trails. I will continue to send daily updates if needed. We all know the expenses the county has chosen to spend on letting this project fester so long. It was your choice, not mine. I wanted it shut down in 2015. I'm not going to be the scapegoat on what you're spending, on you spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. I would like to see what that money was spent on. I have been a very patient man. I've watched a circus performance continue for over eight years. I hope as the incoming commissioners look at appointing people into the positions that will govern the industrial operations, I hope they remember the people that were overseeing this and what it turned into. I hope the new administration will shut down this industrial operation in a residential neighborhood. And Merry Christmas, everybody. Now see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Is there anyone else either online or in the room that would like to speak at this time? Seth, do we have anyone? No? Okay. All right. Public comment is now closed. Moving forward to department head comments or department head reports.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to report on the blizzard condition that we were being told that we're going to have today. Every day at 1:30, we have a daily briefing with the National Weather Service. And today at 1:30, they said that we are under a blizzard warning. The orange is us, goes all the way up into Michigan and that is blizzard. The other is a winter storm warning. And all of our dispatchers are as prepared as possible for the upcoming weather. They are bringing in extra food and they're prepared to stay if, if need be. Also, the sheriff's department, as in years past, if any of our dispatchers need rides into the center who can't get in, they are, their midnight shift and their evening shifts will bring the dispatchers in if possible. Also EMS, their supervisors will be out and they have four-wheel drive. And EMA has also said that they would be happy to do what they can to bring any dispatchers in because obviously we need to man the station. Our priority is to get the dispatchers in. And unfortunately, it's not, it's not a priority to get them back home. So we're, you know, they're going to might have to stay. The highway department, based on the timing of the storm, will station a snowplow at each of our bases, each of our EMS bases, LaPorte, Michigan City and Wantata, which they have done in the past and they do an excellent job. EMS is putting on extra ambulances and their supervisors, of course, will be on duty. There'll be an extra ambulance in Michigan City and also in LaPorte. NDOT, they have already started pre-treating roadways throughout the county. And if you want, if the public wants to know about traffic conditions there, to go to 511in.org, which is, they will get somebody from NDOT will be able to answer any of the questions that they have. Another thing, don't forget to bring your pets in. If the blizzard warning that they are predicting, if the temperature or the wind chill goes down to minus 15 to 30 degrees, frostbite is imminent in 10 minutes if you're out in the, and of course, it can also cause death if you don't seek shelter. Make sure your pets are brought in, keep them warm and out of harm's way, hopefully, for as long as you can. Any abandoned vehicles that are out in the roadways from slide offs or anything, you know, if they just stop, whatever, they will be, they will have yellow tape around them, three feet of yellow tape, which is the yellow sheriff's caution tape. It'll be tied to either the antenna or to somewhere where it's visible to other sheriff's departments and to first responders so that, you know, accident, we can try and prevent Let's see. Basically, all we can actually say or do is prepare for the worst and hope for the best. As you can see, it's imminent, or at least it is, you know, maybe it'll go away, but I don't think so. But Merry Christmas and we'll see how it turns out. But we are, we're as prepared as we can possibly be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Hi, guys. First of all, I'd like to say Merry Christmas to everyone. Hope everyone has a, has a great, great Christmas. Diana, it's been, it's been excellent, you know, and Shaw. We bump heads back and forth quite a bit, but you, you've definitely been a mentor for me. I want you to know that. And so have you, Sheila. I've learned a lot under your watch and I appreciate it. With that being said, I've been in constant contact with, I think, Commissioner's office as I should have been. And I, you guys are at a point where we need to make a decision. It is my decision, after speaking with the highway department and touching basis with the sheriff department, that we do go to a warning, maybe three o'clock or so tomorrow, but definitely by 6:00 AM on Friday. I've been in contact with Lighthouse Mall, who calls me every year at this time. You know, Simon is big. So I've been in contact with Simon, who is stationed, I believe in Los Angeles or wherever, and they don't want to close the Lighthouse Mall. But that is my biggest, my biggest concern is to protect EMS and my responders, the sheriff and those guys. 51, anywhere from 20 to 50 degrees below zero is just unheard of. And there's no protection that we can do. Stranded car on the side of the road, 15 minutes not running can be fatal. So I pray that, that we as a body make the correct decision and do our best for the county.
Yeah, we've, you're right. We've been in constant contact, not only you and I and Rob, Larry Levandowski with the maintenance department, Dwayne with the highway department, and Chief Deputy Heig with Sheriff's Department. Most of the, well, every department head that I talked to today or this evening, I told, you know, I've not, never been one to want to micromanage your department, but what are you going to do? And most of them are going to close tomorrow at either noon or 1:00. To get people home before it gets into the worst part and when you got a whole lot of other people trying to get home. And just to make sure that we're all on the same page, I would make a motion now that we close county offices on Friday.
What about the 12 o'clock tomorrow, towards and including Friday?
Well, we had talked about closing at 3:00, but I, first of all, I think that's too late. I think we should close at noon tomorrow.
Close at noon, but now we're talking closing the county offices at noon and, but starting the declaration at 3:00 PM. And I like to try and stay, you know, you kind of want to have some professional backing when you make these decisions. So I made this decision based on what the National Weather Service, they say 3:00. So I say 3:00, no later than 4:00. And that way, we're covered as a county, doing what's best for the county based on what the National Weather Service has told us.
And both days on that National Weather Service call, both days, one of the things that they stressed, well, in capital letters, we do not recommend people traveling.
Right.
Because, and like I said, you could, somebody could, you could be fine. You got a four-wheel drive, you're good. But the guy in front of you slides in the ditch and blocks the road and now here you are. Now what? You know?
On those calls also, Rich, they're talking about fatalities, not just from people spinning out, but from the cold and from the 50 mile an hour winds, which...
There's no surviving that.
No. Really dangerous situation.
If you have to step out of your car at 30 degrees below zero.
Yeah.
Yeah. How far are you going to go? Where are you going to go? What are you going to do?
In my, in my real job, 37 and a half years at NIPSCO, weather like this was, was bad. I mean, you had so many things that could go wrong. I worked with high voltage electric. There were so many things that go wrong. But the thing that really screwed you up is when you're trying to get somewhere and there's somebody stuck.
Right.
Somebody stuck in the snow or, and you can't, you can't maneuver around. You got to go somewhere else and you got to call for somebody. And the highway department, as stressed as it is, you know, when they're trying to plow a road and it's blowing back in behind them, you know, chasing their tail.
Right. And Dwayne definitely said, you know, the less, and so did the sheriff's department, the less on the street.
Our, our focus should be on the safety of the people that work here, the 800-plus county employees. I would make that motion that we close offices at noon tomorrow and all day Friday.
With the 3:00?
Declaration.
With the 3:00 for your declaration, which we will...
And you're going to want to make clear for the record. I mean, are you, as you see, they have proposed, a proposed declaration. So I think you'll want to take that up, the individual parts, and maybe discuss with the public what you're considering.
I would agree with that. I think we should put that into two different motions. That way it's clear, clean, since we have this one thing in front of us here.
And so to make the public aware of what the declaration says, it would be number three on your sheet, I believe, the level that I want to go to, which is going to cause Rich and you guys are going to get some phone calls.
Yeah.
You know, so just, you know, just, I think, Rich, I know you're, you're used to it. I don't know if you've experienced it yet, but...
We haven't had one of these yet.
Oh.
We had some bad storms that we never declared in...
Yeah, it gets, it gets pretty, truckers don't like it.
Yeah.
You know? And so we want to get this out so that the big box stores have a chance to do what they need to do for their employees. So making this decision tonight and having your office give me something to give to the public, which is probably on that sheet that I gave you, so that I can get it out ASAP in the morning.
So Mr. Friedman, do you have any comments?
I just, you want to discuss what the declaration is going to provide and perhaps take up separate motions because you've got the county workforce initially, you were discussing, but then discuss, are you seeking, you're saying, the, when you say number three, there's four travel advisory levels.
Right. So you want to go to a warning.
Okay, that's, that's four is what you're saying.
Warning, yeah. Well, it's actually advisory, watch, and then a warning.
Right.
So your warning is the, is the highest. That means no one can be on the street at all.
Yeah, just, I want you to be clear on what you're considering because that is a full restriction on travel.
That's a full restriction.
And so do you, do you essentially give authority for this and then make some sort of a, you know... of a, you know, empower your president to authorize the, the director to go ahead and issue it? You know, that, that's what I think you may want to consider tonight, because we don't know the extent of the conditions at this point.
Yeah. And one of the, if I may, one of the things that was stressed again on the call today was not necessarily the, the snow impact that's going to hit between 3:00 and 6:00 tomorrow, but the 30-plus degree temperature drop that's going to happen between 3:00 and 6:00, and it's going to be above freezing just before 3:00. So you'll have a lot of cooling water, significant flash freezing, a ton of ice on the ground, even with the pre-treatments. And that's one of the reasons why, you know, one of the, one of the big reasons why they were pushing for 3:00 as opposed to 6:00 or later in the day.
Yeah. So, you know, guys, to me, the sooner the better. And I, and I say this, and it's a tough situation to be in, especially because it's a holiday weekend. I'm going to take a beating, I know I am, but I'd rather see, I'd rather take a beating for myself and to see one person lose their life. And I think we, if we do not get this information out, where we stand as, as a county, as to what we feel is best, based on the amount of seminars and National Weather Service and everything that I've been hearing and Rich has been hearing, and I've been sharing it constantly with him, so that I have some backup, I just, I just think it's the best thing to do.
Do we, since, since people will be getting out tomorrow and dealing with, you know, for example, like you said, some of the big box retailers, would the big box retailers respond to a three initially before moving up to a four, so that, that watch versus warning? So, you know, maybe a, maybe a watch at 3:00 and then move up to a warning at some point later in the, later in the night, 6:00 or whenever, something like that? Do you think they would respond well to that, or they're just not going to act until it gets to a four?
And I understand, I understand that, but I think what that would do would, would present more confusion. I think we should go straight to where we need to be, to be safe, simply because, like you just said, the weather is going to be, what, 30 degrees, 28 degrees?
At least.
And then, all of a sudden, when you come out of the store, it's two below zero. Now we have a different issue. Now we have frozen spots on the street that, you know.
Yeah, to your point, though, Joe, we've got businesses that will be running and shifts that will be, I mean, we're shutting down, like, factories and, and all these folks are pouring out of their offices. That's concerning. I'm wondering whether the graduated approach is.
Now, here's, here's, here's what has happened in the past, Ms. Commissioner, Ms. Matias, I should say. You know, we, we put this out, and then you have some factories that say, okay, we, we're coming to work, we have to come to work, you know. But now, if we can get the general population to stay off the street, and your big box factories say they do go to work, at least we have half of the community off of the street. If we close some of your, your stores, your Walmarts, and they close, they're going to make that decision to close on their own. But we, as a, we, as a county, what we're saying is, we believe that conditions are right for us to have no travel on the road. And that comes from Dwayne and the Sheriff's Department, and what they need to stay safe.
So I think we need two motions here. The first motion would be that offices will close at noon tomorrow and stay closed all day Friday.
Okay, let's, is that a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to close county, all county buildings and county offices tomorrow, except for emergency workers and people who are required to be here tomorrow at noon, and then all, all day Friday, so that our employees are off the road. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
And as far as the second motion, is what I just said a little bit earlier, with department heads telling me they're going to close at noon, and, and as I told them, I'm not going to micromanage your department, you know it better than I. I feel the same way here. I understand the points they're making, and I understand your point, too. My personal opinion is, you're the expert here. You're the guy in charge. You're the one that, and you know, we had before, when people calling us up, say, well, sure, a bunch of cowards, you've sent all your people home, but my boss at my factory is making me come to work, and I have to be there at McDonald's at 3:00.
Right.
We're going to have that. So I would, my personal opinion would be that we, we sign this and give you the authority to manage it, because you know better than us.
Yep. I, I think it's the best thing to do. If we can go one day, one day, Friday, if we can go Friday with no McDonald's, no, no Walmart and things like that, I'll be happy.
I did hear that recommendation on the, on the call today. They were, 3:00 was the time that.
One of the things you could do, because it does provide four levels, as Commissioner Haney says, can you go ahead, adopt this, give the director the authority, issue the watch initially, and then he can go ahead and issue the warning if conditions warrant?
That would, that would be my motion.
Okay.
Let EMA handle it.
Yes, sir. We'll do it, we'll do, we'll do it that way.
Yeah, I am.
Between Larry and Rob and Fran.
I, I think, for, for example, Joe and I are having a sidebar here. If something would occur tomorrow where the wind shifts and it heads to Chicago and it misses us, it gives you the ability to say, okay, we'll back, we'll back.
Back off, okay.
Yeah. And I think that's important, that we, we keep that local knowledge and local control.
So now, I'm, I'm going to explain to you guys what my, what my turning point is. My turning point is, once that wind gets sustained at 50 mile an hour.
Yeah.
And we have snow on the ground, then I'm going to a warning.
Yeah.
As long as, you know, I call Dwayne, and even when I make that decision, before coming from a watch to a warning, I'm going to pick up the phone and call the sheriff's supervisors and say, hey, what, what does it look like out there?
That's, that's the next thing I was going to ask, is to make sure that everyone that's in the field, Barb's folks are informed, and everyone feels like they, their, their concerns are heard. I think that's really important.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. It's a team, it's a team thing. I can't, I can't sit in my house or in my office and make those decisions. I have to have the people on the street to make that decision for me.
So we have a motion?
We know that Dwayne's got his trucks all gassed up, and everybody knows what time they're coming in and where they're going to go to work.
Yeah.
The hot trucks, they call them, are, are taken home. Larry Levandowski's got the maintenance the same way. They know, they're ready. They're ready to go. They're on top of it. It's the same with you guys, from talking with you and Rob today, you're ready, you know what you got to do.
And I will be, my shelter will more likely be in Michigan City next to the Lighthouse Mall. Any event that I have something big enough, if we get, keep enough people off the street, I shouldn't have to have a shelter. But say we have a neighborhood where all the pipes freeze.
Yeah.
And that neighborhood, they have no heat or whatever, then I'm going to obviously take the Civic Center, and I have a church in Michigan City that I will take in my possession, and that will be our.
So that'd be my motion, that we approve and sign this emergency declaration, and let Larry be in charge of it.
Okay. Second?
Yeah, with a, starting at the level three.
Starting at a watch.
Yeah.
And by 6:00 p.m., if I'm going to change, go to a warning? I like to get that warning on the page before Friday morning.
Yeah, I, I hear you. I think we're, we're saying that you and Rob are the experts.
Okay.
And, and communicating with the other people out in the field.
Yep.
You'll make a good judgment and.
Okay.
Protect the community.
All right. So we'll need two of those. We'll need two, I'll need one for a watch, and I'll need one for a warning.
Okay, so we have a motion and a, and a second. Do we have a second?
Yes, but you, you said you want, you want that in two separate ones?
Well, no, it's all, it's all one thing.
Okay.
But when you go to sign it, if, if we can have Diane to, to, to do it, two of them, so that all I, all you have to do is email it to me, and I send it straight, straight down Indianapolis.
Sure. All right, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, sir, for your.
And my phone is 24/7, so.
Thanks for keeping us all looped in.
Okay.
Appreciate it. All right, do we have any other department heads who wish to speak or give reports?
Commissioners, yes, I've got a comment, if you may. Chief Deputy Ron Heig here.
Yes. Hi, Ron.
Hi there. I'd just like to thank you guys for taking a proactive approach to this upcoming storm. I think, I know we at Sheriff's Office and Larry Butcher with EMA, and I know several of you have been on some of these webinars with the National Weather Service. And a couple of things that I'd like to point out here, some of the comments that they have used in their webinar, and some of it was the severe drifting and the dangerous and deadly wind and wind chills. But I think the one thing that struck me today on the webinar was, excuse me, that they made a comment that this was a rare event to occur, and once every five to 10 years. So I think this is something that we, we don't need to take lightly, and, and taking this good proactive approach is, is, is great, and I want to thank you for that. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Chief.
Madam President, Commissioners, fellow department heads, it is truly my genuine pleasure this evening to present an overview of activity of the department's 2022 annual report. We are committed to, to refraining from mass production of paper versions, which is the most exciting part of this report. It's going to be shared electronically, and you may, if you've checked your email in the last hour, you may see it in, in that, in that inbox. But again, truly my, my pleasure to present the, the findings of this report, which begins and ends with hard work and dedication of many people that would be appropriate to recognize at this point. Mr. Matt Reardon, Michael Seitz, Bailey McGrath, a team that's highly adaptive, able to pivot immediately to assure that the work that is necessary gets done efficiently and is presented in a professional manner. You've, you've heard me say on many occasions that economic development is not an individual sport, it's one that requires the support of many, and each and every spoke in that wheel is, is as important as the next. One of the individuals that I haven't thanked in previous reports is the LaPorte County Auditor's Office. What is difficult to wrap your arms around is that maintaining transparency in the compliance with the Statement of Benefits forms. As a matter of fact, the, the Auditor's Office has a contract with SEH, which I believe is coming up on your agenda later this evening, and is a matter that we, is highly, a highly visible activity, and it ensures that the property tax abatement program, which creates jobs, encourages significant capital investment, and continues to run efficiently, and provides necessary reporting so that the County Assessor's Office can assure that the deductions that were awarded to stimulate investment are accurately reported, are in compliance, and this allows the Auditor's Office the ability to complete the accurate settlement and billing to critically important procedures. Ultimately, these investments increase the overall assessed value of all of LaPorte County, and this puts downward pressure on the overall tax rates. As we kicked off 2022, we knew that the hopper was overflowing with leads. The businesses were going, excuse me, and that the business was going to mandate that we worked efficiently in the office with the LaPorte County Council, given the very detailed procedures that are required to meet the Indiana statutory requirements. Each company is required to submit the application, publicize legal notices, hold the public hearings, and ultimately approve the confirmatory resolutions, setting up their economic revitalization area, and approving the Statement of Benefits forms. And I wanted to give a, a shout out to Mr. Vaughn Galloway and his boss, Auditor Stables, for their solid, consistent guidance, and more importantly, assuring that we made every deadline that was necessary to get this complicated three-step process completed, six companies in four months. Certainly a record for the Office of Community and Economic Development, maybe in all of, in the state of Indiana. And the point I'm trying to make here, very complex process, complicated and critical, that it be done efficiently and in a timely fashion, and we were able to get that done, which is why the thank you to, to Vaughn and, and the Auditor's Office. Very complicated. So we, what is most noteworthy is that the Office of Community and Economic Development boasts the capability to work one-on-one with all of our industries, fostering a supportive, a supportive collaboration, making prudent recommendations that benefit not only the company, but also create good, full-time, permanent jobs. We assist the company direct, each company directly, each and every step of the way, start to finish, in this definition of one-stop shop of economic development assistance, and I am proud to boast about this capability. But again, this can only happen because of the fact that we have the in-house capability in the office. To crunch the numbers, verify with the County Assessor's Office, our, our very own, Mr. Michael Schultz, and his entire staff of certified experts. Before I run down the list of, of highlights of 2022, I wanted to thank Bailey McGrath for her patience and expertise. We wanted to produce a cutting-edge annual report that I believe is being shown, as, as you hear from me on the screen. And it's actually a technology I, I noticed earlier this year and thought, Bailey, if we could produce an annual report of this caliber, we'd be saving a lot of trees. So my hat's off to Bailey for her tremendous work and the, the team's collaboration in, in laying such a, setting a bar at a, at a quite a high level. There's the, lastly, before I run through this, this list of highlights, I always say that I'm trying to be brief. I'm actually hosting Christmas dinner this evening.
You better go now.
And the longer I talk.
I'm getting hungry.
The, and I, quite frankly, this will force me to, to, to have you go to that annual report and enjoy the statistics that are recognized, and the people that are so, so critically important in the process. You know, I lastly would leave you with the thought that there's not a department in this county that I've not communicated with on just about every project we ever worked with, and I wanted to say thank you, and happy holidays to all of those departments for their assistance from the, from the word go. And always a smile, happy attitude to support the efforts, and we're, we're very pleased with the, the statistical report. In the email that I sent, there's an attachment which bodes very well for 2023, and that's a bipartisan support letter from Representatives Mervan and our Yakim, which is, just, it's, it speaks volumes for the fact that broadband is front and center. It's critical to rural America, and we look forward to at least being able to get that positive support that we need from the NTIA office. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, let's move on. We have requests. Consider permission to approach the council for funding to replace nine computers, and this comes from the, Mr. O'Neill, Chief Juvenile Probation Officer.
Motion to approve the request to go to the council.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to permit the probation department to go to the council for funding. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Consider permission to pay Ms. Peggy Corbett for 26 sick days due to her retirement from the Michigan Township Assessor's Office.
Motion to approve she is, she is qualified for that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay Ms. Corbett her due days due upon her retirement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Next, we have old business. Consider the second and final reading on an ordinance to amend site development permit fees and authorize third-party service provider by Ms. Messicar, the MS4 Director. She was unable to join us tonight, so Shaw, would you just give us a quick overview and, and any recommendations or concerns you might have?
Yes, we did, working with Diane, we were able to add the piece that, to make sure that it was amended to authorize various, the MS4 Director's authorized to negotiate various agreements, subject to approval by the Board of Commissioners. So as on any contract, it's got to go through the, the, the full board for purposes of execution, but I, I think the rest is fairly self-explanatory in terms of simply changing the site development fee to read the 200 acres per, or $200 per acre of disturbance, and we're recommending approval if we could.
Motion to approve the second reading on the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve on, on second reading, an ordinance to amend the site development permit fee and authorization for the MS4 Director to work on that contract and bring it to the commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Next, under new business, consider SEH contract for the Auditor's Office. Mr. Stables?
Attorney has communicated with us that he has looked it over and approved it. I would make a motion to approve.
I would, just in keeping with our consistency here, as we've got about six, seven days left, business days left in the year, respectfully suggest we hold this over until the, to the next meeting, since it is a contract. meeting since it is a contract. And for historical purposes, last year, this contract was approved January 6th. Our next commission meeting is January 5th, so I don't think it will have any detriment on the contract.
No objection.
So, Mr. Auditor, is there any issue with it being delayed, or will that cause hardship for your office?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. All right. I accept a motion to table this.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table the SEH contract until the first meeting of the new year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Next, we have Commissioner comments. Commissioner Haney.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, everyone, for another great year. I wanted to echo some of the comments we had earlier about how good it looks out there. I commented on this before. Our facilities maintenance department did an amazing job out there, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the work that Marquis did out there with those reefs on the front of the courthouse. They built those and put those together again this year, and they look absolutely fantastic, especially if you have a chance to get out there and check them out during the day in person. They look really good. Really happy with that. Also wanted to briefly talk about the situation there at 400 West, that other drive there. I was actually in contact with Representative Pressle earlier this week and spoke with him about some different programs we could push forward with next year, and hopefully getting the state to address some things as well, and put that on Representative Pressle's radar and be including that in the email to him about some things we'd like to see for next year, maybe we can get the state engaged. They're going to have a lot of extra money next year, and hopefully we can get a little bit of extra of that back here to LaPorte County. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and a Happy Hanukkah as well, or whatever you choose to celebrate this year, even if it's just a good time with family members. And I'd like to close tonight with a quote from Irvin Greenberg. He said, "The proper response, as Hanukkah teaches, is not to curse the darkness, but to light a candle." I think we could all use a little bit of light this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, what's next?
Yeah, several people have commented about the decorations on the courthouse, and Larry does deserve a lot of credit for that, because I know he's right on top of it. But in all fairness, that's not all he does. That's not all he has been doing. He kind of headed up the Michigan City courthouse project and made sure that, I mean, we had a committee, but Larry was like the guy that was making sure that things get done. The new ambulance base and highway garage in Rolling Prairie, we'd meet regularly about that. In fact, I was out there this morning. Went by there at 7:30. Larry's already there. Guys, amazing. All of the buildings that we take care of, all of the parking lots, and especially the transformation that's taking place at our fairgrounds, it's, you can't say enough about it. And Larry is like the driving force to get all this done. And I don't understand, you know, tomorrow, you guys are going to be out working in this, cleaning parking lots and making sure that our emergency people can get in and out. And if that's not essential people, essential employees, then I don't know what is. And I think that needs to change with the council. They are essential. They are emergency responders. They keep things going, and I think they're kind of the unsung heroes of this whole thing. But Larry has really done well with that department. The book that, the presentation that Tony Rodriguez had here with the LaPorte County Works, that's something that's really come into its own. You know, when we hired Mike Seitz to go out and do expansion and retention visits, and if you've ever been with Mike, it's an amazing process. He's got a little program he goes through, and when he gets done, he'll send a report back to that company, and they say, you know, now that we see all of our strengths and our weaknesses, and we see them all in front of us, it really helps us out. And when we, now we have, actually have people calling the county saying, when can you come and see us next? But what an amazing little team we have next door to us there with Mike Seitz, Tony Rodriguez, Matt Reardon, and Bailey McGrath. They're all amazing at what they do. And kind of the unsung hero we never talk about is the RDC, the Redevelopment Commission, who works hand in hand with all these, all four of those folks. And it's such a tight-knit little group of very qualified, highly motivated people. And when you look at the 39 North, the 35 and I-94, the 421 and I-94, the KIP, there's so much stuff going on that's bringing the county forward. That and the countywide broadband, which Commissioner Sheila has been really keeping that up and going. We've really got some really amazing employees and appointed people in this county doing great things for LaPorte County. I hope next year at this time that we can still talk about the successes that we've been having and that we continue to move forward as we have. Sheila's job, for all she does, is going to be very hard to replace. Her replacement's going to have some big shoes to fill. And speaking of big shoes to fill, everything we do, everything, we got an attorney who's been here for 27 years who keeps us out of trouble. The guy, he knows what to do, he knows how to get it done, and he knows how to bring in extra help when we need it, and not a day goes by that I don't have conversations with the attorney. And we don't always agree. We've had a history of really not agreeing, but I have to say that when we talk about people that might be leaving, he's going to be extremely hard to replace. But the one person that's going to be impossible to replace, Diane Gonzalez. She's the best there is, and I wish her very well in her new endeavor, whatever it may be. But we've been a team here for six years, and I can't imagine doing my job without Diane. So everybody have a Merry Christmas, and let's hope for a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Rich. So as I traditionally focus on LaPorte County Works, you know that economic development is close to my heart and so on. We came up with this idea for a program. I did not realize how hard it would be to get it done. So we've highlighted 26 companies, and a couple of them are in the annual report that show some significant investments, so I do want to highlight them. Alexander Chemical, $6.3 million of investment, six new jobs, 75 construction jobs. Sullivan Palatech, added capacity and quality with $3.7 million investment and 15 new jobs. Dwyer, capital investment of $1.5 million and 25 jobs preserved. O-Tech Corporation, $2.9 million, 20 permanent jobs. Harrison Electric, expanding their capacity, 10 permanent jobs. Peepers Expansion, if you haven't found Peepers glasses, they're great readers, $2.4 million investment, 30 new jobs, starting salary, average salary $44,000. So I could go on and on. EPAC, growing. Hero Animal Hospital in Westville is a new company. Lots of great news in LaPorte County. So if you think LaPorte County is a sleepy little place, there's lots going on in LaPorte County. So Mike, thank you for helping make this program so successful. You've done a really wonderful job. So today, in keeping with LaPorte County Works, where we highlight local companies, but we also are working to make sure the word gets out to people who are needing a first job, need a job with training, or need a better job, that they can look right here in LaPorte County and find really great opportunities. So we're going to focus on Models Plus LLC. It was established here in 1996, and it's located on Grayton Road in Kingsford Heights. You never know what's made in LaPorte County. It's so interesting. So this was founded as a dental laboratory specializing in orthodontic training models, and then they began to grow, and they began to do surgical training models and marketing their services to dental professionals around the world, right out of little LaPorte County. As the need for outsourcing certain aspects of medical education began to take off across the world, the business decided it would be best to purchase and stock machines necessary to produce all the materials in-house and under the same roof. So today, they are fully equipped with flatbed printers, advanced laser systems for cutting and engraving, a wide range of products. Their bread and butter, they say, is their manufacturing of custom anatomical models. They provide custom packaging of cases with foam presentations and trade show displays, engineering services, laser marketing and engraving, all around the medical profession. They are currently fully staffed, but they always accept applications. They're looking for good people. Our website will have the information, but it's, their information is at www.bonemodels.com/careers. If you're looking for employment in a fun and fast-paced environment, they want to hear from you. So that is Models Plus LLC in Kingsford Heights, Indiana. So I would like to end my service to the county with a few words, especially for county employees. You heard examples today of teamwork, and I think that's what I'm most proud of, working with the county team. We got through COVID, and we built a team of professionals that really communicated, and that has stayed through and through. As we talked about the storm, we were all on calls this week, listening to professionals advising us, but then taking that advice and making it our own. So county employees, those of you that are online or hearing me, or will hear about this tomorrow, I want to thank you for your patience with my millions of questions. I want to thank you for your friendship and your professional advice and encouragement, and I wish you well. You're the part of the job that I will miss the most. I hope that broadband doesn't wither on the vine. That was really, really important work. Rural broadband is critical to LaPorte County, and that's been my baby, and I hope that someone leads the way forward. And then economic development with Mike and Tony and Matt and Bailey and the Commissioners and the council, that work is critically important for the future, future for our kids, future so that there are good jobs for our children. So I want to make sure to bless Diane for her professionalism and friendship. Thank my colleagues on the commission. Thanks, Shaw. You've done a great job. Thank you, everyone. With that, meeting is adjourned.